And you can start whenever you're comfortable.
Okay, here we are at the work session. Can we have a?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion Chairman that we vote to open the work session of the planning board for January 25th, 2021.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second? Second. I'll second it. All right, meeting's open.
Hi.
Kathy, what's the agenda?
Our agenda, here we go. Let me know if you can see that.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay.
A little smaller. Okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
First one's a new request.
Yeah, so let me just show you. This is the subdivision at 122 and 132 South Main Street. It's, it's a minor subdivision, lot line modification actually from an old subdivision application that was approved a number of years ago. I think it goes back to 2006. But they changed it recently, meaning in the last two years. And, but they only have a certain amount of time to file with the, with the, with the county clerk's office. But they really don't have a lot of time if they don't have the health department approval. So they're actually asking for a 90 day extension to approve, to, to resolve this with the health department. So they'll be back in, let's see, where are we? 90 days now. If it's approved in February, then it's March, April, May, they'll be back. So they don't actually have the date, but I guess that's what they're asking for through May.
And there's
Kathy, it's all just because of this wonderful crowd at the health department or this has been going on forever?
This one?
Every, every two months, there's another issue. So is this, it's just, they're just taking their time or is the health department as bad as we think it is?
It, it takes a long time to get through the health department right now. And it's even worse because they have people working remotely. So I know, so their files are wherever and people are working from home. I, I think it's just, it's harder than usual to get things through. So I don't think this is an unreasonable request. We could ask them on Monday to give a little bit more than what they have in here. As to, you know, what they, if they've heard anything back from the health department, for example. If you'd like, but I, I don't, I don't see anything changing with this.
Requesting the short extensions. Why don't they just request a six month extension?
So the code actually has two 90 day extensions as what is in the code, which is kind of outdated. But that's what's in the code. So that's why they're asking for that.
So this is above and beyond what the code would normally allow.
It is. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, I think maybe a little bit of explanation would be great. I don't see any problem with it, but I think a little explanation would be worth getting, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ask them.
Right. Do we have the agenda up? Cause I'm not seeing it. Let me, let me share again sometimes because I'm only on one computer. Can you see it now?
Thank you.
So I think I have to stop sharing and then share again when I go from file to file.
Okay, thanks.
Did you guys, did you actually see the plan when I switched over or no?
I did.
Oh, you did. Okay. All right. Well, this next one is the same thing. This is
Yep.
65 Captain's Neck Lane and 41 Barnhart Street. Same thing. This is a lot line modification. Are you seeing the plan Jane actually?
Yes, I am now. Yes.
Okay. This was to give some additional land to parcel two that faces Barnhart Street. Same kind of problem. They are having issues with Suffolk County Department of Health Services. So this is a request from Gil Flan again and asked that we give a year's extension. And so maybe that's something that is considered for the other one too. Is that what's the harm in having a one year extension instead? And that's a, you know, maybe a question for Alice.
I mean, I, I think we can only give the 90 day extensions as frustrating as it is for everybody.
Yeah, it, it looks like that we may have given six months to this one before though. So that's why I'm wondering.
Excuse me, I do, I do have Gil's hand up if for some reason you want me to allow him to speak today at the work session. That's up to you guys.
I don't object.
I don't know anything except that I've been doing this a while and I can't recall in all the extensions we've ever ran in hardly any of them are ever for 90 days. They're usually for much longer periods. So if we're supposed to have been doing 90 days, we, we haven't been over the last several years. It's always been six months or a year or whatever. So that's just why I asked the question. Why don't we just go longer? But if they were supposed to, but whatever.
I think 90 days is a silly timeframe when you're talking about something that takes so long. So I, I agree with you in that sense.
We should add it to the running list of code, recommended code modifications. I could do that.
And in lieu of the fact that it's COVID, everything's moving even slower than normal. So I think we should have some leeway.
Sure, sure. It's, it's simply unfair to be bound by these short extensions.
So well, I think we should just do what we want to do and because otherwise every three months you gotta go through this whole rigmarole again. So I think we should stretch it out a little bit if, as long as it's not illegal or we're doing something bad.
I don't have a strong objection to that. I think given the exigent circumstances with the global pandemic, that makes a lot of sense.
So does a year make sense Alice? I mean, it, it doesn't seem like there'd be any harm with a year.
That's fine by me as long as it's fine with the board.
By me.
Yeah, I have no objection.
I don't object either.
Derek, would you like me to let Mr. Flannigan in or did you want to wait till the public hearing?
What does he, what does it, I'm sure he's going to be happy. What does he have to say?
I'm not sure.
Ask him, ask him to tell us how happy he is.
Gil, did you still want your hand up to speak? His hand is still up, so I'm happy to let him in if you'd like. Okay, Gil, I just need you to put your camera on and unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay, I was about to put my hand down, but suffice it to say I'm very happy. It makes a lot of sense. And by the way, I think Alice may tell you that there's a section in the subdivision regulations that gives you the right to waive any of your requirements too. So I don't think you'd be doing anything illegal or inappropriate by giving us a year. Otherwise I'll be back in three months and who wants to go through that again? So thank you. If you do that, I'm very grateful.
Okay. Thanks, Gil.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. So the next on the agenda is 99 Sanford Place, the subdivision of that property in the office district. Ellis and I have gone back and forth on a draft decision for next week. So we're, we're not ready with it yet. But so we can circulate that before the meeting next week.
Back and forth because of controversy or just back and forth because you're working on it?
Um, no, there's a couple of questions of what should be in it. Yeah. Not controversy.
No controversy. It was just a complicated one.
Yeah.
Changes over time.
Different.
Though ultimately fine, I think.
All right. I just, I'm, I'm not a fan though of getting the thing at the public hearing at the next meeting and looking at it and having to vote on it at the same time. I kind of like to look at them a little bit just before we do that. So if you
Does Thursday or Friday work?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think that works. Right Kathy?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
This next one, so I think is it? Okay, I'm gonna have to stop sharing for a second because I have to bring up a different plan. Stuart had sent over a plan for seven Powell. So this was just submitted. You all have not seen this, but I have actually because I actually went to the site and met with the architect and Stu to talk about what they're proposing. I think it's a lot clearer now on the Squire Holden plans. There there is oops, sorry. Wanted to zoom in here. Right now you come out of the building on these steps and you make a left turn and you end up right in Prospect Street. So that's definitely a bad thing. So they are proposing that the steps go the other way away from the street. That's, that's a that's an improvement. The, the access to the parking in the rear here will be via Elm Street and it does not need to go on to the MTA right of way any longer. So they will be paving a driveway to the back here and putting in some drainage. And they're removing a, a small alcove, a part of a building in order to create a little more workable space here because this will be a loading area. He did ask if they could add a, bring back this, this building, an old doorway that faces on, oh, I'm sorry, it's Powell Avenue. An old doorway that faces Powell Avenue as an alternative for, for loading. And I didn't think that was a good idea. We don't want to have, we don't want to create a situation where you're having loading into a travel lane of the roadway. But for architectural features, I thought that would be fine. And that's sort of up to the architectural review board.
If you on Powell Avenue there adjacent to the building, you can't park there now, can you?
You can't. The building is literally right on the edge of the roadway.
No parking area, right?
Right, right.
Guys unloading there.
Exactly. Yeah. So I have, there's a few questions that I have on the plan. But for instance, how are they going to accomplish the, the heated driveway? Because a lot of times that requires a subsurface system and I'm just curious what that is and if there could be any long-term environmental impacts possibly. I don't know if it's chemicals or if it's just water. And so there are certain questions like that that I have, but otherwise this plan is complete. And I would say this is ready for a public hearing that could be scheduled next week for the March meeting.
Does it have to be paved? Just seems like that's all we do is pave everything.
That would have to be a question for the applicant. There's a preference to pave it? Yes, so.
And what about the, the northern property border there? Should, should there be some sort of a physical barrier that stops them from crossing over?
I don't know if it's necessary. I did ask them to have their engineer look into what can be done here because there is a little bit of a grade change. As you know, I, you've been over there, Tony, right? I'm pretty sure you said you had been there. So when it goes transitions on the property line, there's a bit of a grade change. And then the area on the MTA site is these cobblestones. So it's sort of a tripping hazard over there anyway. They don't have, they can't do anything on the MTA property without permission, you know? So we want to just kind of make sure that the improvements stop at the property line. As far as putting a fence, I would ask the engineer for that input, whether that's going to, it's, it's narrow as it is.
Yeah, but
Between the building and, yeah.
The whole issue is, you know, us sort of approving something that is, that is very difficult to work with the way it is without crossing that line on a regular basis, just to maneuver in and out of those spaces.
Yeah. I hear, I hear what you're saying. So the fact that it's feasible, that they can get back in there without going on MTA property is different than what they had before where they had to, what the planning board was looking at, they had to go over MTA property to get to it. So this is different.
In looking at what they've got now, there was some question at the last meeting about what Tony just brought up, sort of the maneuvering around of the parking and how are you gonna, you know, and the guy said that people are going to be at lunch and there's not, or whatever, there, people are going to be, the trucks are going to not be there during the day. Do they have enough parking? Is it legal parking or is it grandfathered or what's the situation with the parking?
I actually, I have a question into Chris Talbot about that because the prior use was actually where the spur was and they had a lot more parking demand than this will. And the CO has this as being office and warehouse use. So it's not a change from what the current CO has, but it is a change from what the actual use was prior to this. It was a much higher intensity use before.
Looks to me like what they have five spaces?
Yeah. And one, two, three, four, yes, five.
And that's what there's always been. And even though they might be required to have more because it's grandfathered, they, that's just the way it is.
Yeah, they, so they never really had like organized parking back there. Never paved or, or striped or anything.
So I guess
I don't think it was
No, but my question is, is, is the parking okay? Is it, is it legal? Is it, is it what they need to do?
From a, well
From a square footage calculation standpoint, the building is a certain square footage and it doesn't, isn't that what usually dictates the number of parking spaces?
Yes, and they don't show the parking requirements and I actually didn't calculate them. Because the question is, do they actually need to comply with what the requirements would be today? And if they do, they would need, they would need relief. Because an office would need, I didn't calculate how many, but if it was an office warehouse, they would need more parking than what they're showing. So the question is for the building inspector of whether they need to go to the zoning board.
At what point does that thing kick in where if you don't have the right number of spaces, you can pay a fee to the village and overcome?
Yeah, I, I haven't gotten involved with that, with the zoning board.
I was gonna say possibly using some of the, the railroad parking since it's not full.
I think that's what the owner spoke about last week, didn't he? Yeah.
I don't think we can recommend that though.
No. Please don't.
Yeah, let's not.
Well said. Well, I think we gotta sort of dig into that a little bit. Just again, I, I, I am on, I agree wholeheartedly with, with Tony that we really have to be careful about approving anything that implicitly seems like we are allowing the applicant to take advantage of other people's property. We have to be pretty pretty careful about that.
I have a question for Kathy. Kathy, do you think it makes sense for us to get Chris Talbot's determination about the parking before we schedule the public hearing? Or do you think those can be done simultaneously?
I think I could get an answer before Monday.
Good.
Okay.
But, but yeah, I think it would be good to get that input. Yeah.
Good.
So, and what about turning radiuses too? Because it looks like
Yeah, it's not
Can you even turn off of Elm Street down that proposed driveway? I'd like to see those on the plan if possible.
Okay, request that.
What's, what's
It's a tight site.
Is that it's, it's always been done and maybe it's always been done without the official blessing of village code. But it's always been done. And if I were the applicant, that would be what I would be saying is, hey, it's always been done. Why are you guys giving me a hard time about it? So I think, you know, I do understand that, but but by the, and, and I also think it's great that the applicant is doing something really nice with this building and turning it into something that's going to be, that would be a nice addition to that area down there. So I'm
I was, what do you mean by that, Roy?
What's that?
What do you mean by that?
You know, it's just, it's nice what he's doing. He's, he's renovating this building. He's willing to put some money into it. It's, and I think, I, I like what he's doing to the building.
Oh, okay.
Not tearing it down.
Right.
Right. I mean, yes, right. You would never get something like this under the, under the code now, right? So, you know, you, it's, it's sort of, how do you make it fit to the, make it better? And, and have good planning at the same time.
Right. So let's see if we can answer those questions and, and come to a an understanding that works, that worked for the applicant, but also protects the neighbors and, and, and follows the code.
Kathy, I have an additional question. Is the, is there anything about the new signage that is under our jurisdiction to consider?
The ARB is the agency that reviews the signage unless it's actually a physical sign that's being like on, you know, on posts. And I, there's no, nothing that I have information about for a sign. So we'll have to, I will ask that question though.
Okay. It seems like there's a note on the east side of the building. Right there.
Right here?
No, on the, on the, it's so small. On the far east side. That's the west side. No?
I see it.
On the other corner.
Over here?
Yeah, over there.
Oh, okay. So that, on the building, that would be the ARB that reviews that.
Okay. And the other discussion that the applicant had about the poles removals, will that be updated for that meeting as well?
I, I, I'm sure he will report on that. Those are things that will have to happen for this to be improved.
Okay.
So.
Can we, can we take a look? Can you expand the site plan in the northeast corner where the dumpster is?
Can you see it?
Yeah. Okay. So it looks like that dumpster will be accessed from the west side.
It does.
Okay.
Or, or they may need to have, I mean, this is one of those things. They may need to have this parking space open in order to get to the dumpster.
Or the alternatives.
Or the alternatives, exactly. But there is a way for him to get to it without accessing MTA property. It's not, we're not saying, okay, he needs to do that.
How was the way to get to it without accessing the property?
I mean, the MTA property.
How, how do you see that happening? It's impossible.
It's impossible.
Those trucks don't bend.
Okay.
That's, that's a very tight spot with that angle.
Okay, we will ask that question as well. I don't know if there's another location.
Maybe one of the parking places could serve a dual purpose.
Yeah.
Just that.
Good touch, Tony.
Yes. All right. Any other input?
Do we have, do we have a copy of this? I'd love to print it out at the office so I can study it a little better and
It, it came in today, so I will, I will send this to you.
Okay.
One, one came, I think with an email that
Yeah, we got it today. Jackie sent it.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Check your day's email, Tony. I think we all might have gotten a letter from, from the
Oh, seven Powell. Yep, at four o'clock it came in.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'm gonna print it right now.
All right. So do you want to move on or?
Yeah, if there's anything else, move on.
Oops. Okay, so the, the next item on the agenda is the 15 and 29 Prospect Street pre-submission conference. This is, I think this is the yeah. This is my copy of the, the plan and I have a note on it that MF25 zoning doesn't exist. So but this is, this is the concept. Is the applicant in the audience?
It's, I do have David Gil Martin here, if I remember correctly. Yeah, his hand just went out.
Yep.
Do you promote him to panelists?
Yes. I, I think it makes sense to speak with him because this is a pre-submission at, at a work session. So
Okay, I just brought him over. David, just camera on and microphone on. Please.
I'll stop sharing for a second.
Oh, there we go.
Evening.
I think everything just got muted.
I, I don't see anybody muted at all. Can somebody speak?
Hello?
Yeah.
Hello?
Okay, I think we're good.
Okay, so David, you want to kind of take it away again and like where we're at?
Okay, we're, we're here for a pre-submission conference. I've consulted with my clients when they brought it in. The property and, and what to do. And one of the things that we talked about because we heard there was a serious need for affordable rental units in the village is we developed a plan that could accommodate that need. And then we also had a, a market rate plan that was the original plan that was thought of. I heard Kathy's comment about the MF PRD. I, I don't know where the engineer got that from, but I didn't want to spend a lot of time with them and expense and getting things changed and brought up to date. This is a pre-existing non-conforming property, so we would probably go the route of what we did with Bishop's Pond and then similar to the latch. So we would anticipate that process. I think that Chris Talbot had heard that we were considering a plan and asked me to come in and, and show them what we had going. He was intrigued with the affordable plan and, and suggested. And we agreed to come to the board for a pre-submission conference and sort of talk about it and see where the board stood on the, on the two different applications so that you know, we'd bring one forward that you were more inclined to consider. I'm not trying to box you in in any way to give us an approval. We were just trying to get some feedback on where you thought or which would be a better plan for the village. It is my client's preference to go with the affordable plan. But we're just looking for some initial feedback and obviously we can't hold you to it, but just looking for some input.
Who's Chris Talbot?
Building Inspector.
He's a building inspector?
Building Inspector, yeah.
Okay.
So Alice and I spoke this week about this, actually it was last week, about this as a So, Alice and I spoke this week about, um, this, actually it was last week, about this as a pre-submission conference. Um, as you all know, the planning board does not issue approvals for a pre-existing, a change from one pre-existing non-conforming use to another. Um, that would be something that the zoning board would need to approve. And, uh, see if I can say this correctly, we, you know, the planning board can't really, you know, they're not going to make the decision on the actual change in the use, but they would be involved in the site plan approval as part of that overall review. Um, so, we can provide guidance on the type of things that we would require and, or we expect would be required as part of the review. Uh, but, uh, I think, and I think we agree on this, Alice, that the, if, if the planning board is inclined to review an application for affordable, if that is something that is appealing, then that, I think that's perfectly fine for the planning board to, to to say that they prefer that. But with the understanding, of course, that this has to go to the zoning board, it has to go through SECR. Uh, it will need quite a bit of review. Uh, you know, this is a property that has, um, some slopes on it. It's gonna need sewage treatment. There's, there's a lot of things that have to happen, but that, you know, with that understanding, that if, you know, if it goes through SECR and there's no environmental impacts and the zoning board is okay with the change of use, then, you know, it's fine for the planning board to weigh in. Like, did I get it, Alice?
You did. You did a great job, Kathy.
It's, it's a little different. It's a different kind of application, so.
Yeah, I think he nailed it.
All right, so I guess in this case, the planning board members, you know, if, I guess, ask away, and, you know, what do, what do you think? We prefer the affordable, or?
As I mentioned last meeting, in, in broad philosophical terms, in keeping with the Village Master Plan, I think affordable housing is something the village needs. But as you just stated, Kathy, there are so many other things that would go into this application, uh, that just sort of a philosophical preference for that isn't enough to, oh, I mean, you really have to cross the Ts and dot the Is on, on every other issue, so. I mean, that, that's my personal feeling about it. I don't know if I speak for the other members of the board.
I also think without having the information between which one is going to have a greater environmental impact negatively, the affordable housing or the, or the end, it's hard to make decisions if you don't have those, that information to compare.
Exactly.
Yeah, um, I think the caveats are more important than the outcome right now, based on what little we know. Uh, this, I'm, I'm, I wanna, personally, I want to find out somehow, uh, David, whatever, uh, whatever you can do, who, who is doing this? There's not a lot of space left in the village to redo. This is really at the core. It is a terrible drainage district. It's right there, sitting up on the hill above a major drain for the village as a whole. And there are a lot of issues that could swamp all sorts of other, um, as Roy said, things that might otherwise be prominent in a larger, more general plan for the village as a whole. So, um, I think it's, it's, it's gotta be pretty particular and, and pretty inventive as to how you're gonna use this piece of land up the hill that flows down to a place that's, frankly, in fifty-some years, I've been here frequently underwater. So, um, it's, there's a big caveat in suggesting we have a preference, because the, the issues that are going to arise are really substantial.
Oh, I mean, we will have, um, the, the entity that's doing it is incredibly capable of, of building this out and, and doing it in a way that will, uh, comply with any approvals that may or may not happen here. With respect to Board Member Claire's, uh, statement, you really have to go through the process of, of secret to determine, you know, which may or may not have the, the impact. So, you know, what I would say is the affordable, um, you know, i- is gonna be bigger in, in space, so you consider that. There'll be more traffic, because there are more units. There will be sewage treatment plants, so I think it's, it's a better water impact. The as-of-right, or the, the market rate unit, we have an as-of-right health department. That, that will meet that, so the pre-existing flow, uh, works on that. Um, you're replacing a 252-seat restaurant, so I think you take that into consideration, and I think, you know, once you consider what the as-of-right is on this property, I think they're both better, uh, for the environment. But, you know, certainly, certainly, uh, I know, I know the entity and the people involved in the entity, and they're very capable of delivering this in a way that I think you'd be proud of and, and will.
How many units for the, um, affordable?
I'm sorry?
How many units for the affordable?
Twenty-six.
And then for the other, it's eighteen?
Twelve.
Well, okay.
And just for clarity, Rooney, when you talk about as-of-right, you're talking about how many units they could get based on the flow that they have with the restaurant, right? You're talking health department.
Yeah, as-of-right for the restaurant use, right, the current, the current allowable use.
Are there some sort of regulations that determine what is affordable? Like, you know, how is accent set?
Yeah, that, um, that, that's, uh, uh, actually an issue that we talked about. The village doesn't have that, um, but the town does, and the town has a, has a, uh, actually a chapter devoted to it, so part of the town code, chapter 216. And, and we would discuss with this board and covenant, um, to a, you know, a, to whatever regulations that are, that are reasonable, but, um, would effectuate the affordable in perpetuity.
Well, I, I'm, I'm sure that, given your history, you don't have anybody but the finest clients known to me. I'm not worried about that. I just, I'd like to know what they've done what they've done before that, that, uh, you know, that, that they can point to, or someone can point to, which would be in line with this project. This is, I sense, if they built fifteen of these or ten of these, that's one thing, but if they haven't done one of these, I'd love to know.
Uh, they have.
History, that's all. We'll get to it. I don't have to do it tonight, but I, you know, I'm not trying to say you don't have great clients. Different problem.
Yeah, you, you, you know, you know these people. You know who they are. And I, I'll introduce them to you at a point in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, you may be able to help me out about this, but if, either way, whether you go twelve or twenty-eight, is there some, um, village?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six village, um, code that, that applies to the, the, the term of the, of the tenants? I mean, is, you, you, you're not expecting people to be there for a week, are you? I mean, is, is there something, have they've got to be year-long leases? Is there any kind of definition?
This is, this, this is gonna be a full-on rental. It's not gonna be a hotel, and we're not gonna violate the zoning code. The intent is for, uh, one-year minimum leases, and, and, and we will stipulate and, and submit a covenant to that effect. These, and these people do not operate hotels. It's not, it's a different business.
Can you fit twenty-six units without going three floors?
Uh, we, we have, in, in the plan that we've given you, we've shown it on two floors. I'm just, I'm looking at it to confirm it.
It's unfortunate when it's on Zoom that we don't, we don't have the plans in our hands like we used to, and we, we do see things on the screen. As, um, Tony had mentioned earlier, it would be, it's very helpful when you have something printed out to see the overall.
Right, we, we have, we have submitted this, I think.
I'll go take a look.
I'll ask, um, I'll ask Jackie to circulate it, and I'll volunteer. She'll give me your emails. I don't have your personal emails, but I'll ask, uh, Jackie to circulate it, and we've, you know, we've dropped off twice the plans.
Everybody's staying away from Village Hall these days, so we should probably go in and look at the file at some point.
It's, it's safe. Nobody's there.
That's right.
So, the plan, oh, sorry. Um, the plans that were submitted, I believe, had some elevations, but those were only for the, um, the market rate, right?
Um, I believe those, that was the market rate that, that the elevations were for, and it's just to get a flavor. And, and I actually don't know if those were submitted, but I will, I'll make sure they go in tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, I'm not sure how much more detailed feedback we can give you, as, as the, the board members have pointed out, without knowing more details, it's hard to give more feedback. So, um, I don't know if this has been as helpful as you would have liked it to have been, but.
No, it hasn't. Um, I, you know, it's just, I, I guess, I guess what I'm looking for is, my client has a preference, and, you know, I mean, if, if you could say, hey, don't bother, that's, it's too dense. I mean, it, you know, we've, we've gone through this. Um, and, and they're, again, very capable at pulling this off, but it is a big undertaking uh, to do this, to build the sewage treatment plant is expensive, so it, it's gotta be twenty-six units. And if you say to me, hey, look, that, that's too dense in that area, I don't believe that it is. Um, the lot coverage is less than twenty percent. Um, so I think it makes, it makes some sense. Our only challenge with the twenty-six is, uh, parking. Um, and, you know, we, I don't know if I'll offend Kathy by saying this, although she's not the author, but I think it's a well-known fact on the east end of Long Island that zoning codes overpark uses. And, and I believe that's the case here, and, and we'll be able to demonstrate that if, if, given the opportunity, uh, with this use. But if you think we're crazy going forward with it, I think that's, that's sort of what we're looking for in this process, because it, you know, obviously, it's expensive, and, you know, we're gonna go through a, a pretty intense secret process with it. So, if, if, if you don't think it's possible to put that type of, um, density there, that's, that's what we're looking for. It's our, it's our preference to do it. There's an identified need. And, and this is probably one of the last chances that the village will have to be able to provide it. And, and we'd like to do it. But don't want to waste your time and our time and, and resources.
I, as I said, I have no, I, philosophically, I think it's great, but you've got to prove that it's not too dense. And if you, if.
Yeah, just. I, I, I think I could prove it right now. It's just, what, what will you take as a measurement?
Well.
Traffic, traffic is a big measurement of, of density. So I, you know, I think the traffic in a twenty-six unit, rental property is far less than a 252-seat restaurant. But it, it's, it's gonna be, how we measure that? How do we measure? So.
I, I look at things like, you know, this is gonna be twenty-six families that will need groceries and drugstores, and that's, that's my biggest concern in this process, is that those, that part of our inter-infrastructures bursting at the seams, especially since COVID has happened. Um, so, I, I mean, I'm a big fan of the philosophical issue with low-income housing, affordable housing.
Well, it's not, it's not low-income.
I, I know. I corrected myself. Yeah.
I want to be, I just, that happened.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I've done several affordable housing, and that's always the criticism, and, and I think they call it a voucher program now, not such for me. And, and I just, you know, I, I know you, you did correct yourself, but I want to be very clear. I, I don't know if there's anybody else watching, but the board, I want to be clear, this isn't snater or voucher housing.
Right. So, I, you know, that's, I'm just, I think there are broader issues at play that we're gonna have to think about.
Right, so, so, in response to that, I'd say, um, the following is, and I have a lot of experience with, um, with affordable housing rental. I've done, you know, we have done four for, uh, a separate entity. Um, and then I've done Bishop's Pond, Bishop's Pond, and a couple other condo units, and, and we're proposing two bedrooms, which does not usually end up in families or, um, you know, students for the school district, which is what that analysis is always um, about. Out here, it's, it's a different type of, it's a different type of, of use. Um, it's generally, uh, younger people and retirees, so it doesn't, uh, generate children. The second thing I'd say is, it's actually the perfect spot, when you look at standards to locate, um, affordable rental housing, because it's within walking distance of services that would be accessed uh, by the residents, or the potential residents of this property. I think that that, the point is well-taken, but it, it cuts, um, both ways. And I, I wonder what the, what our post-COVID village will look like. I know we're bursting at the seams now, but, you know.
Anybody else?
Radio silence.
I think you just have to take a.
I was gonna take one, one thought away to give to my client tonight. What will I say to them?
Take a leap of faith and go for it. I think that's all you can do, because I can't give you a guarantee one way or the other, which.
I'm not looking for a guarantee. I'm just looking for, there's no hard no on the, on the twenty-six units. I guess that's what.
I don't have enough information to say, to, to, to even make a guess at that, I'm afraid.
With the limited information you have.
I would say that, that with this on, on even a speck on the horizon of a potential application, that you know that this is gonna be, will be controversial. There will be people in the village who think it's horrible. There'll be people who think it's great. There'll be a lot of community discussion about it. Um, I'm not, I do not shy away from that, but I, you know, that's going to happen.
Neither do I, as you know. And, and, you know, you are appointed to this board, and you're the best of us to, to make the decision of what's good for the village here. And you'll balance it all when you make that decision.
It's my view that your duty is to surprise us.
That's what I was trying to avoid.
Well, you gotta surprise us. It's all a surprise.
Okay. I don't know what I'll tell them, but we'll, we'll, what I'd say is, you'll either see us soon or you won't.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I think that's it.
All right, uh, we have the regular scheduled meeting next Monday at 5:30. And if there's no further business.
I think there's minute approval, right?
Oh, sorry.
The twelve-seven minutes have been recirculated with, um, Mr. McFarland's, um, edits. I don't know if everybody got those. I sent them out probably about 1:30 this afternoon or something like that.
And Tony found a typo.
Uh, I have not checked my emails since then, so if there is, I, like, that, not a problem. The one, um, the one from January, I am doing tonight, and I will have it ready for you for tomorrow. I mean, for next week, excuse me. The edits, I have edits, but I have to put it there.
So, can, shall we vote to approve those, given Tony's correction?
For the, the December 7th?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the minutes of, of the 7th of December. Yeah, I'll move that we approve the minutes of, of the 7th of December.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
And the Januaries I'll have for you for Monday.
In further ado.
Do you want to, you want me to move? I'll move that we adjourn to the work session.
Sounds like it's time.
Yeah. It's the witching hour.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye.